Welcome, everybody. This is Isle of Palms City Council. It's Tuesday, June 25th. At 6 o'clock, we like to start on time. I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the media have been duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. And if you don't mind, please join me as I say a prayer, to be followed by our pledge allegiance and road call. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Now that we are in our summer season, I ask that you please look over our city family, look over our island residents and visiting guests. Oh Lord, look over those and our public safety personnel and our military and their families who all sacrificed protecting us around the world and here. I thank you for life itself and for our individual liberties and freedom. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight in our governing our city and making decisions that affect our residents and visitors for not only now, but for future generations. It is in your name I pray, amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
In her next to last road call, Ms. Marie Copeland, our city clerk, road call, please.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Corren.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Rice. On the other way, on the other side of Mississippi. And Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Administrator Fergoso.
Here.
And Attorney Copeland.
Here.
Thank you very much. Reading of the journals of the previous meetings of May 28, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
So moved to approve.
Second.
And discussions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous? Citizens comments? Do we have any citizens? Yes, sir. Come on up. Name an address, even though we know you, but we still got to ask.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hodek. I live at 65 Twin Oaks Lane. The first thing I want to say is thank you to our new chief and the police department on a great job they did with the problems that happened on Twin Oaks Lane Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of last week. Four people were apprehended, two of age and two not of age. And so my neighbor next door to me at 64, he was the one that houses broken into. But they did a wonderful job, and I want to say thank you. We've got a great police department, got a great fire department, too. Secondly, what's been going on on our beach? It's, you know, we've, my neighbor Diane Troy, she's with the turtle team. I thought she'd be here tonight, but she's not. But they've been picking up a lot of garbage and so on and so forth. And I mean, you know, God bless you. And it's a shame that our guests that come here, I like to call them visitors because guests don't do that. I think guests take care of things, but, and they don't care. And I know they're trying to do what they can. They do have people that coming out, I've helped out a few times, too, along the beach, trying to clean up, too. But it's a shame that we cannot get these people to understand. And I think what we're going to do now with the styrofoam coolers and all this other stuff that, and the bags that you're hopefully going to pass tonight, that maybe, and the signs, and let's find these people. They need to be fined, and they need to pay up for what they're doing, what our citizenry has to do to keep our beaches clean. And that's it, and I thank you very much for all that you do.
Thanks, Jim. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Andrew Campbell, I live at 3907 Hartnett Boulevard. I'm actually not here to talk about Tidaway, I'm here to talk about trash. So I'm really excited about the ban. I've been doing the beach cleanups, and I don't, I think the ban not only will help get rid of some of the trash, but it's going to kind of give our guests, not guests, visitors, whatever he said, get it in their head that, hey, maybe I should check all my trash out. So I think the ban is going to be amazing. I'd also like to address the trash cans need to be locked down. My nephew was on the beach when that storm came up Saturday and pulled two trash cans out of the ocean. So if we could figure out a way to anchor those down. And then maybe y'all could consider, all of us at Tidaway do the beach cleanups and the cigarette butts. Maybe we could ban cigarette smoking on the beach? Just try. But anyway, but I'm really liking the ban y'all are talking about today. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Name an address, please.
Michael Phim. I'm from Tidaway Water Sports at 6941st Avenue. I'm here about a couple of things. One, to kind of build off of what Ginger had to say, about the trash cans blowing over. Pitt Street Bridge has the neatest trash cans I've ever seen. They're on a post with stakes that go through them, so when you go to empty them, you just have to lift them up and empty them, but they don't blow anywhere. It's the best thing I've ever seen in regards to trash. So, but obviously you guys know I'm here for Tidaway, too. What I'm asking is not an actionable thing today. I know that, but this has kind of come, you know, come on recently that I realized that I have to ask for it, and it's probably going to have to go through all the committees. And I wanted to see if there's any way that it can be moved forward. Anyway, you guys know that we do wakeboarding water skiing as part of our activities, and we use a jet boat. And a jet boat is similar to a jet ski in that it has no props, anything like that, and it's for the safety of our patrons. You know, the kids can jump in the water, they don't have to worry about it. But like a jet ski, it must be flushed at night. So to preserve the, you know, the maintenance of your engines. When the, we had, we have a jet boat dock. A jet boat is a floating style dock. We have it for our jet skis and we have it for our boat. When the DHEC or when the OCRM thing occurred and we, and it was found that the dock was too far out, and y'all asked us to move our jet ski dock behind because of liability, no problem, we did it. We had nowhere to put our jet boat float. So we've been putting the boat in and out of the water every single day, and the boat float also had two jet ski slips on it as well. So we're putting it in and out every day. It's hard on our equipment. And additionally, we're keeping, we're using up spots that we could give to people. And on the weekends, I am actually renting a spot from the marina to put my trailer because I, you know, I mean, it's just not something that we planned for, and to run it across to our homes in, you know, Mount Pleasant is just not feasible. So I would be, you know, it's also cost me a lot of labor, have to keep people there every day. I'm just, I'm requesting, right now, the former Morgan Creek Grill docks are not being used. I would like to request the use of just one slip, just for the summer, till we figure things out, just so I can, you know, operate to what I was, what I have been doing in the past. And then, you know, we can figure out everything else in the fall, but I just need some help here. We're going into July, and if, this has to wait until full council at the end of July. I mean, it's just going to be really, really hard on us. That's all. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I'm going to say.
Yes. Good evening. Kelly Thorvelson, South Carolina Aquarium. I'm here on behalf of the plastics ban on the beach. Just want to first say thank you to the Isle of Palms for being environmental leaders. I've personally worked with you all with this island for over 15 years. Sea turtle nesting, sea turtle releases, sea turtle rehabilitation for many, many years in, in the past four years in a, in a more conservation-focused realm. And, and I just, we, on behalf of the aquarium, we thank you for all that you're doing. I work closely with the Isle of Palms cleanup crew and have since the very first sweep last summer. And the, the data that is being acquired from those litter sweeps is really priceless. It's really helping understand what the litter issues are. And I just want to say thank you to everyone on the island, and certainly the organizers that help with that effort, to Beach Santa, who probably is the single most, like, probably single most data person that puts into litter data into the app. This data, I just want everybody to understand how important it is. As we move forward with these bans, we need to know what's happening before they take place and after they take place to see if they're actually working. As we come into 2020 with this state ban on bans, we, we just need to know what's happening with data, and are these bans working? If they are working, that's fodder that we can take to the state level and tell them, look, these bans work. So I just want to encourage you guys to support data gathering and litter sweeps as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Twice? Ways and Means?
Thank you, sir. Let's see, we met a couple of times. The latest time was 5:00 Tuesday, June 18th, which is a week ago. Trying to finalize a budget. Well, first, we had the financial reports, and the treasurer gave a report. Revenues are looking good, are coming in. We're projecting, the forecast was one, this is the last month of fiscal year, to be $558,000 more than budgeted, and expenditures to be quite a bit, were down quite a bit, like $830,000 some thousand. And that's, some of it comes from delaying and several expenditures. As far as the revenues, the general fund expected to end approximately $1.1285,000 to the good as compared to budget, assumes all transfers incurred as budgeted. The forecast included 20 budget documents, assumes all this getting rolling capital projects. Largest contributors to deposit net result are revenues, business license $323,000 better than budget. Building permits, $374,000 better than budget. Parking fees, $90,000 better than budget. Expenditures would be down mainly because of vacancies in City Hall, police department, public works department, that count for savings of approximately $350,000. City fund balances are anticipated to end, you know, just slightly higher than the 63018 fund balances, but this is $4.2 million better than anticipated due to the general fund gain discussed above the impact of delays in spending for several expenditures that have been rebudgeted as part of the larger 20 projects, primarily, primarily public safety building repairs, 900,000 drainage phase three, 300,000 depth service on 75-foot ladder trucks, 100,000 public safety equipment, 300,000 beach expenses, 334,000 in Marina bulkhead, docking privilege, $250,000. These are segments primarily related to timing differences only. When you look at your revenues, the only thing that looks a little strange or funky is capital projects coming in is down $433,000, but that's, that's just simply rebudgeting and the timing difference. And the same thing goes for expenditures, because we put off some things in order not to have a tax increase, is part of it, and that's $1,728,000. Also down under the Marina fund, you'll see a slight variance under about $62,000, and that has to do with the, the big project for the marina, that we can't really recognize it till we really start to work on that. And what we're going to be doing is, first thing we're going to be doing this year is, is getting all of the surveys and, and the permitting process going. Want to highlight briefly, I don't like to talk a lot, you know, none of that, but if you weren't here for the public hearing a few minutes ago, there's a couple of things on this that I, that I think is really important. The Ways and Means Committee unanimously recommended proposed 20 budget, and for approval and ratification by City Council tonight. It's been a while since we had unanimous approval from City Council on a budget. The proposed budget does not include property tax increase. General fund revenues are $11,567,620, which represents 13% increase from fiscal year 19 budget. Activities that are driving this increase includes an increase in residential rental license rates. These rates have not been increased since they were implemented in, she said 2002, but that's 2070, I'm sure. So 18% increase in business license revenues fiscal year 19, which indicate a significant construction activity on the island. And the other activities include increases to the rates of building permits and parking fees, general fund expenditures, or $11,328,081, which is a reduction of probably $16,000 from the fiscal year 19 budget. Total personnel, personnel costs represent 72% of the general fund expenditures, which is a decrease of the percentage, and the total payroll cost increased 0.03% from fiscal year 19. Finally, the proposed budget includes funds to support the following initiative projects, repairs, public safety building, final design, engineering permitting, and phase three drainage project, we're going ahead with that. $500,000 are small, but high-impact drainage projects address flood prone areas. And this is something that I'm really happy about, that we've been, some of us on Council been fighting for for years. $150,000 to proactively address maintenance in city buildings and assets, which is really important, so that we don't find ourselves in a mess in the future. We also have some funds for grant writing, strategic planning, a financial advisor, and an online financial transparency dashboard. That's the, that's the basics of it. And this time, I would like for the mayor to consider, one, number one, I had a motion I wanted to present, and number two, I wanted to suspend the rules of order and move item A under Bill's already possession of Council to Ways and Means Committee to consider it this time. First, we need to do the consideration of the 2019 merit increase, and I have my, I have my motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
I'll second that motion then.
Well, you, okay.
Your motion is to make the merit increases basically across the board for all?
The motion will be to approve the merit increases for fiscal year 2019. Period.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion?
What does that mean?
Well, since last Tuesday's meetings, we've been able to complete the detailed calculation of the individual employees' merit increase using the midpoint approach, shared them with apartment heads, and we've had the time to digest the true impact. We've also received feedback from council members and staff that seem to indicate that this, using this approach for the distribution of the merit increases might not be the right direction for the city at this time. There is concern about the negative implications that the midpoint approach seems to present right now, and they don't seem to be justified by the relatively small net difference in, to the city, which is less than $8,000 overall. We've heard from employees loud that they're concerned about the elimination of the COLA for FY '20 and a further reduction of the available merit dollars that's available for high perform, based on performance, regardless of where people fall, regardless of high performance and depending on where people fall within the range, doesn't really send the correct message to our employees. When we ran the numbers and saw the difference between implementing it across the board based on performance and a citywide scale, the difference between doing that and using a midpoint approach just doesn't seem to outweigh some of the negative implications that this might have on employee morale and potential cost of turnover if folks feel like the longer that they stay with the city, the less that they'll ultimately be making. The other concern that we heard is, you know, the merit pool, we're moving from a roughly 4% to 5% in the past, which we've all agreed is not sustainable, we're moving to a 2.5 merit base increase, which, you know, in, in my head, I think it's enough to control some of the growth that we're seeing in personnel costs. And it just seems, it seems like it may be too much at once to not only reduce the available merit dollars for employees, but then a further reduction for people who tend to be long-term employees because they're fault, they fall with it about the midpoint. So I know that the recommendation from City Council would be to approve us applying the merit increase, and I just wanted to say, after going through the exercise as requested by council, and would look at the midpoint and the way, a different way to distribute some of these dollars, we just don't think it's the right idea or the right direction or sends the right message.
So it needs to be across the board, including people who've been for 20 and 30 years, senior employees. We were penalizing them, basically.
So the way that they would, that it would work, we would still have a citywide scale. I think that that's important, and I think that most, you know, department heads do agree with the equal distribution of that based on performance. We would, we would just not be making any adjustments to the percentage based on where people fall in the range. The net difference on, of doing that is roughly $8,000 to the city, and I think it has the potential to be, to have a greater impact on employees.
The only adjustment in percentage would be based on their merit.
Correct.
At least, which is the intent of the merit.
Correct.
So your motion was across the board. And second, any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it.
Okay, I've got a couple more items that I didn't quite finish, and then I want to suspend the rules. Going straight to discussion of old business, we, there was a motion from the chair to move to delay consideration of the millage increase for phase three drainage projects to fiscal year '21, and the mayor seconded. We had a discussion about it in passing unanimously. Councilmember Kinghorn moved to adopt the fiscal year budget as amended. Councilmember Buchanan seconded. During that discussion, Councilmember Varan's, Varan's moved to remove $15,000 from the fiscal year '20 budget for divestment tool. Ward seconded. That motion failed, two to six, and then the motion to adopt the fiscal year '20 budget passing unanimously. And if I could, mayor, I'd like it this time to suspend the rules of order to adopt a second reading, to have a vote on the second reading of ordinance 2019.
Motion to approve as amended and waive the reading. So moved, do I air a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in, yes, yes, sir.
This motion is on the approval of the budget, correct?
Yep.
I just want to point out that I'm disappointed that there's nothing in there that deals with our efforts to move from the septic systems that still remain on the island versus getting the entire island on sewer. Sometimes we look at a budget and we talk about all the good things that are in there, but we should think about what's not in there. And I can hardly think of anything more important, the potential economic impact on the island, safety, health, tourism. If we continue to have rising sea levels, which I believe we will, if we have greater rain events, which I believe we will, we're going to have more septics backing up, untreated water, we're improving our drainage, and you all know, and common sense dictates where that drainage is going to go. And this budget does not include any revenue to cover our staff time that's excessive and will continue to be, and/or set goals or priorities. And it's my beliefs that this council should be working towards 2030 to have full implementation for island-wide sewage. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Just to that point, I just want to concur. I think as we look down the road beyond just the 2020 budget, as a 2020 issue, I don't think it was feasible to have additional monies beyond what we're already doing and keep tax levels where they are. The millage increase was delayed as a consequence of us not being able to permit the work in 2020. I think we all need to be well aware that it's not feasible to continue to tackle these large projects with some form of taxation, and, you know, we can discuss whether those are millage increases or other forms. I just want to support what Ted is saying in the longer term, and do note that we did put money for strategic planning. We do have, I think, a little more foresight as to the direction the city needs to go in this budget discussion than has been had in any of the meetings I've been through in the last four or five years. So again, Ted, I support what you're saying longer term. I think for 2020, we did a pretty good job of cobbling together projects that, you know, we're still scratching our heads on how to, how to get funding. DeSereys smiling on that one. But let's, let's at least be aware, this is coming, and he's not wrong. We have 1,400 septic systems that we need to address.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
To that same note, in the public safe, our Public Works Committee minutes, I read where there were three ordinances that were asked to be brought forward at this meeting dealing with hookups to sewer. And in talking with the city administrator, it was delayed because there needs to be meetings with the Water and Sewer Commission, which we know is sometimes difficult to get on the books. So my question is, at some point, we're, as a council, are going to need to look at those ordinances and decide if we are in fact going to pass them, and then work on the rest of it as we go along. But these three ordinances do address hookups for new buildings and for those buildings within 150 feet, et cetera, et cetera. So to your point, Councilman Kinghorn, there are some ordinances in place that will start that movement, even though it's very slowly, that will start that movement in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Respond for the Public Works Committee. There were only two of us present at that committee meeting, and we felt like, and because Councilmember Kinghorn was the one who was pushing for that, he wasn't present, we decided to wait. I can also update you that there is some movement, from my attending the Water Sewer Commission meetings, they have been receptive to having discussions with us on this matter. So we're seeing some encouraging developments along those lines and are going to be pursuing that.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, this is all about the passing this budget. All those in favor of passing this budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on almost through, new business, presentation by McKay Kitty, agreement procedures for Marina tenants. Chris Kerr, audit manager of McKay Kitty, president of user findings, for agreement procedures for Marina tenants, Morgan Grill, outpost, Tidaway, and Marina Joint Ventures. There was not an audit, they were specifically engaged to review the financial accuracy and internal controls of businesses noted above to report, determine if they have solid, found reporting practices. For each entity, looked at general ledger sales and costs of sold, they compared sales transactions to cash register tapes, they compared cash receipts to bank statements. This is really interesting to me, but I'm CPA. I know y'all. I'm almost through. Anyway. Morgan, Morgan Joint Ventures, Marina Joint Ventures, Marina Outpost, authors found financial information to be organized, found no discrepancies, samples tested, and found no internal controls, deficiencies in their processes. Morgan Creek Grill was also found to be very organized, and staff produced all the information authors wanted to see and show all their questions. They had certain variances, or to call them deficiencies, that in the internal controls were stated, they did not think the city should be concerned. Tidaway Sports had some difficult providing all of the records because everything is, their businesses intermingled all their financial transactions with their Mount Pleasant revenue in the city of Charleston, and it was hard to get the Isle of Palms revenue and test that properly. But they couldn't provide supporting document on proper allocation of payroll and some other things, but they are, they have improved their accounting practices, and they now have recently hired an accountant to review their final record on a regular basis. Also, we had a consideration of fiscal year 19 merit increases, we already talked about that, those are sensitive discuss. Any further? The meeting was adjourned at 6:24, and next meeting date will be 5:00 Tuesday, July 16, in Council Chambers. There is my report. Mr. Mayor, I apologize for being a little winded at night, but there's a lot to go with.
Any questions? Hearing none, moving on. Public safety.
Thanks, Mayor. The public safety meeting met on June 3rd at 9:00 AM. All community members were present, as well as our new chief, Kevin Cornet. First item on agenda on our old business with discussion of beach First item on agenda on our old business, with discussion of beach parking along Palm Boulevard, as with the new parallel parking on both sides. We've had some problems with cars double parking and triple parking deep, and we're trying to find ways to help enforce that and find ways to combat that, try to increase presence at 21st Avenue at the Curve. We also had, wanted to try and initiate a dialogue with Charleston County Park personnel about the line of cars waiting to get into the park, backing up across the intersections, backing up the bridge. So we're working with them, try to find ways to make that service a little more easier for them to get in and out. We also discussed some outsourcing, some beach services, or the potential of it, where folks can, where we have BSOs, outsourced BSOs on the beach to help enforce our ordinances and regulations. We had an update on our Flowbird mobile application app implementation. It's up and running, so you can actually download the app and pay for parking within the front beach area, parking lots in the Ocean Boulevard. We did have some discussion of our public transit initiative that we're trying to initiate, but due to some personnel over at the SCD, or COG and SCDOT, the vans are not ready as of yet, so they'll be up and coming here, hopefully, soon.
Mr. Chairman, might I make a comment?
You got a big?
Yeah, it's not going. It's not going to happen this summer.
Right, okay.
They couldn't get it together, and, you know, this agency saying they couldn't do this, that. Sorry to interrupt you with that.
No, you're fine. I mean, that's kind of what we figured from the last meeting that we had, that it was going to be pushed back too far. So, but at least we-
We'll keep pushing that.
Yeah. We did have some discussion and update on standards for dilapidated structure. We do have a couple of vacant houses out here on the island that are creating a problem, both safety-wise and it becoming a nuisance. So we've directed the staff to try to draft an ordinance to address those issues, and that'll be coming up in our next meeting. Under new business, we had a discussion about abandoned golf carts on the beach. Of those of you who are not aware, that you can drive your golf cart on the beach if you have a handicap access, a handicap placard, and it's listed by the state. But we have to have a policy if something were to, an emergency were to happen, that we need to find something to do with that golf cart. So the staff has put policy in place to remove golf carts if need be, if there's an emergency. We did have discussion of installing a camera at breach inlet. That came out of the last city council meeting from Councilman Kinghorn. We had discussion about that. Battalion Chief Hathaway thought it was a great idea and see how difficult it would be for the fee to go to the fire department as well, because he explained that being able to see what was going on when the COG comes in would give him an idea whether they need to go to the beach or whether they need to go by boat. So that, we're pulling those numbers together for that. We had discussion of requiring all dogs that visit, live or visit the Isle of Palms to have proof of rabies vaccinations. Right now, you have to have, it is a law, but it's a state law, so only officers can write tickets for that, so we're going to adopt a, we have a motion later on, we'll go ahead and adopt a city code that our dog enforcement, or animal enforcement can enforce that as well. We also had discussion of bike lanes on Palm Boulevard. We've always put this as part of, as a need with the county. We're going to go through and try and revamp that, try to see if we can come up with some funding to get that to go through. It's a lot of money, though, and hopefully we can do it with repaving Palm. We had some discussion of installation of crosswalks from 41st Avenue to the second gate across Palm Boulevard. That was brought up from the last city council meeting. This has been brought up before, we've had some discussion on it. One of the concerns is that you can really only have a crosswalk at, at an intersection. So it's been, it's been brought up before, and they were denied, but we're going to go back and see what other ways we can work this to enable to put in crosswalks in those Discussion of submitting a DOT encroachment permit for Palm Boulevard golf cart path. As you know, we do have a golf cart path on Palm Boulevard that goes between 20th and the Harris Teeter. Across the street from there, there is a path, but is, it's not a SCDOT permitted, so we're going to go through the paperwork to try to get that where people can drive their golf carts to there, so we can improve that property as well. We had the fire department, police department gave their monthly reports, and those can be found on the city's website. And our next meeting is July 1 in the council room at 9:00 a.m.
Job well done. Any questions?
Not a question. I call for unanimous consent, Ryan, to read two items into the agenda. Both of these comes from citizens. Yesterday, I was at the Marina, and we've all heard about Titleway's track record providing assistance and safety, but it's not often you get to see it firsthand. There was a couple having a problem with their boat, and they went over to Titleway, and the Titleway staff very quickly went to them and addressed the issue. They've submitted a letter to the editor, and I'd like for it to be included in our minutes. The second is an email I received from a gentleman who organizes three bike rides a week. There's probably an organized bike ride that takes place, if not every day, nearly every day that goes on the Isle of Palms. It could be four or five cyclists, or it could be 25. About three weeks ago, there was one taking place that happens every Sunday, and a gentleman was finishing his ride, going across the connector, slipped on some trash, and broke his hip, and had major hip surgery, and is still in rehab as we speak. The request from this gentleman, and I've shared the email with the administrator, is that we be aware of the need for additional bike lanes, and in the meantime, that we do what we can to clean those lanes, and of course, our roads. I indicated to him that, of course, most of our roads are state-owned, and certainly the connector, we do take some responsibility in our local roads, but I'd ask council to be aware of this, for your committee to monitor it. And I think the information Bob's letter is very appropriate and very well thought out. Thank you.
Councilman Smith. Member Smith, I'm sorry.
I had a few things to say and a couple questions about dog licenses. I'm glad to see the committee take it back up because what we have on the books does not make sense. I believe that whatever law we wind up should be applied to residents and non-residents fairly. I believe that we need to make the changes so that our animal control officer can write tickets related to proof of rabies vaccination and related animal control violations. I have a question. Will a city registration tag satisfy the requirement for proof of rabies currently? Since you have to provide that when you register.
Currently, no.
So you won't have to have both, a separate vet issued rabies tag, correct? Besides which, making, the city registration tags are currently voluntary essentially anyways right now. I do continue to believe that if we want to make real public safety improvements with dogs on the beach, that a colored collar system, similar to what Sullivan's Island has, would be the best way to go for dogs who are off-leash at the beach and at the dog park. And I think if you speak to dog owners there, you will find that many agree with that. However, if this council does not have the will to pursue a collar system like that, I will support the changes that we have before us. And in fact, tried to suggest changes along these lines as an alternative last year to the collar system if there was not support for it.
This is on our dinner for a little bit later on, so we'll be tackling, have the first reading later. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none? All in favor? I'm sorry, moving on. I got lost in all the talking there. Public Works.
Yeah, so since our chair is not here for our committee, I will be subbing in. Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, June 5. We covered a lot of ground in citizens' comments. We had Katrina Limbach talked about encouraging, reaching out to local businesses and short-term rental companies to assist in getting the word out about changes, ordinances related to trash, and also, and about living the cleaner way when we're, when we are on the island. She also addressed littered trash cans, which she has encouraged previously and is continuing to lobby for. Otherwise, in our report from our Public Works Director, Public Works personnel conducted 10 beach sweeps during the month of May, and by that, that's when they go and collect all the leftover chairs and umbrellas and take, do a special run. So as we, I think many of us know from social media and our own, we've had a problem with people leaving a lot of those items, big items on the beach, for them to be picked up. DOT was on the island fixing sidewalks on Palm and Waterway Boulevard. EDIS is doing work on our general ditch maintenance right now, which is always great. Our director, Pitts, reported that they had selected a new public assistant, pub director of facilities and maintenance, and that an offer had been made, and I'm pleased to report that it has become official, and we can welcome Robert Acero to our ranks, and he will be joining us, if he's not here, at the next, is he here?
He's, he's working for the city now, but not tonight.
Yes, he will be joining us at the next committee meeting, so we'll look forward to meeting him then. Let's see, there was an issue with the backup of restaurant garbage at the compactor that has been resolved with communication with the restaurants about proper use of the compactor. Thomason Hutton, update, we got an update on Phase 2 drainage. Thomason Hutton is finishing up with the conceptual plans and cost estimates that, and they were also selecting small projects to be done with the $500,000 that we earmarked in the fiscal year '20 budget, so we'll be looking at those more closely in the future. The public works renovations are almost complete, or are altogether complete. Awesome. At that time, they were almost completely. We also talked about, got an update on ditches and drainage issues. Let's see, there was one, some developments related to 25th Avenue, that there is a flooding issue there, that that may require a more comprehensive solution that could also affect issues on tabby lanes, so they're looking more closely at all of that in a more holistic way. Let's see. We talked a lot about garbage on the beach, especially after Memorial Day weekend left a noticeable amount of extra garbage. We talked about, we heard from Mr. Gerrels, who is currently doing our trash pickup on the beach, and he brought up something that I did not realize, but evidently has become a growing problem with people hanging out on the beach late at night, after midnight, and he believes that they are contributing to our garbage problems by leaving a lot of their stuff behind. Let's see, he said that we currently have eight trash barrels at Front Beach, that they are always overflowing even when he is picking them up twice a day. I believe they had some issues with the trash collection equipment. Have those been resolved now? Okay. And then in the interim, he was having to get out and actually physically empty the garbage cans, but evidently was adamant that he do those without receiving extra help under his contract. He felt like he should be doing that. We did talk about the hope that maybe we could have greater enforcement on litter issues, but we have some issues with not having our BSOs available, fully staffed, that we can afford them to do that on the beach. We discussed construction and household garbage and debris, didn't really come to any specifics on that, but it was a good conversation. And we talked about how miscellaneous garbage is picked up on Wednesdays, that the public may really not understand that that's a one day a week kind of goal, that we get most of that picked up, so it winds up out on the street. And we decided at the end of our meeting, as we discussed, to defer on ordinances related to the public sewer system due to Councilmember Kinghorn not being with us to discuss that with us. And we will be meeting on August 7. We will not be meeting in July.
Any questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that any committee, if there is a member who is absent, don't use that for a reason to delay. And certainly, with me personally, I would like to see more action, more expeditious, more policy setting by council, and direct our fine staff to do the implementation. Leadership requires goal setting. We can set the goal, direct the staff, and then get the job done. There's no reason for delay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, sir. One comment, I totally agree with Ted, that's why you have a quorum. You shouldn't stop business because one person, no matter who it is, is not there.
Well, I'll respond to that. I mean, that was one of the reasons. I believe the other reason is, I can't speak necessarily for the chair, but we are in the midst of looking at a huge project, an undertaking with the Water Sewer Commission, and I personally feel that we need to have more discussion with them before we move on those ordinance.
Thank you very much. Recreation did not have a meeting in June, so we're going to move on to personnel.
Alrighty, personnel meeting. Committee met on Tuesday, June 4 at 8:30 in the C L Council Room. Councilmember Rice and Moy were there, and all appropriate staff. We started off by revisiting the criterion selection process for commissions and boards, and the staff had not yet received all recommendations from those bodies, so we'll be getting that report at our next meeting. We got an update to the hiring of Assistant of Public Works, which we've already heard from Public Works Committee, so I'll skip over that. We talked for a while about merit adjustments. Guess what? We asked, we talked about the second annual after our inaugural employee appreciation day, and we don't yet have that scheduled or planned, but we asked staff to kind of go ahead and get a jump on that, so I expect an update at our next, our next committee We, before I get to that, I got two more things. Yeah, alright. As it relates to our offer for employment for the city administrator, the city administrator that we're making an offer to, Desiree Frigoso, has requested an employment contract, and we're working with our legal counsel, and we'll be getting some advice as well from the MASC legal authorities to make sure that we have a solid contract that represents the interest of all the parties involved, and we will be presenting that to council for approval at the next council meeting. There's the goal. But that will be something that will be voted on as a, as a contract that the city's entering into. So more to come on that. I just wanted to alert you guys that that was happening. In terms of vacancies, right now, we've got one communications technician in the police department. There are some other openings that are being evaluated by the city administrator and the chief. Fire department, fully staffed. Public Works is now fully staffed. City Building is fully staffed, City Hall. We have the vacancy of Assistant City Administrator, which the city administrator is evaluating now before posting. That concludes my report.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure. Please do.
Your statement that the employment contract would be brought up at the next council meeting?
That is the, that's the goal.
Are you going to then call probably a special meeting of personnel in the interim set of personnel? I guess we'll personnel-
I'm sorry, I said July. I forgot, I forgot what month it was. I thought we were in July.
No, not yet.
Not yet. I'm sorry. The goal is actually for, the Personnel Committee meeting, committee is not meeting in July. Our hope is to have that contract agreement in the August meeting.
Any other questions?
Thank you for clarifying. I thought it was July.
Not yet.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank one of our directors for extremely great training of her staff to move on to the public works. That puts her down, but she does a great job moving them up, so thank you. Real Property.
Real Property. Real Property met 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, June 5. Councilmember Ward and Bell were there. Councilmember Ferentz was not there, but we had a quorum. First item in old business, there were, well, first of all, there were no citizens' comments. First item in old- First item in old business with status of removal and replacement of the underground storage tanks. Don't need to say much. It's finally done. Thank you. Second item was the update on Marina Dock's rehabilitation project and the status of permitting. I think it's worth noting that, you know, we've had some correspondence come from citizens as well around what we're doing. We are moving forward with the permitting. And they're short of remedial repairs. There really isn't anything we can do pending permits, and that process is anticipated to take up to a year.
However, if any, you know, whenever we are aware of any safety issues, safety hazards, we always actively and get the fire department involved. And we have conducted some temporary repairs to address some of those tripping hazards for life safety.
And we started that last year and the fire department was helpful in that as well. There was some discussion facilitated on doing some things over and above what we were looking at, just rehabilitation of the fuel dock. And that discussion was such that it was recommended that that building actually possibly be made bigger and with some amenities such as restrooms. And I think it was myself that suggested we would happily accept monies from the Marina operator to do that, but struggling with budgets, that we were looking at rehabilitation projects that in general placed in kind for what we'd be replacing.
A quick update on that?
Yeah, sure.
The permit application was finalized today and I have yet to review it. However, the permit application does not include any additional or expansions to the fuel hut. We are already concerned about, you know, the amount of funds necessary to replace the docks as it is. I think that we need to focus on that. And on top of that, I think that increasing the footprint of that fuel dock further complicates permitting. We're already on a tight deadline to get permitting, permits in place in order to go ahead with a replacement. So I don't recommend that the city includes a permit applications, a permit application with an expand fuel hut for the Marina.
Didn't hear any volunteers to kick in extra money when we brought that subject up. So I think we all concur. Status of public safety, building repair project. I don't think there's a need here to go into this in detail. We discussed in detail in the Ways and Means Committee meeting. That obviously is moving forward with budget consideration and the reports that we've received back on the condition of the building as well. Status of agreed upon procedures, Councilmember Ward has covered in the Ways and Means Report. I'm trying not to be redundant here. Good, yes. Update on Marina Restaurant RFP, that's worth talking about. And I'll ask Desiree to help as well. We did issue, we're not calling it an RFP, it is a...
Call for offers.
Call for offers. And that went out on what date specifically?
Early June.
June 10?
June 10.
Several weeks ago.
Yeah, several weeks ago. And proposals will be received until the end of August.
5:00, August 31st.
Correct.
So from that point, it's anticipated that, you know, it will take us some time. There'll be two pieces. One is choosing the offer that would benefit the city most and negotiating the deal with the party submitting the offer. And hopeful, it's anticipated that we'd have a clear direction about where it's going in negotiations by the end of October. Again, these are guideline dates that we're trying to manage to. We don't know what offers we'll have coming in. I think we'll have a wide array. We have had feedback from you, Desiree, that there's been a good deal of interest. I like that, a lot of interest. New business, there is...
Question?
Yes, sure.
Has the committee discussed the advent that if a substantial bid comes in to make substantial improvements on the restaurant area, that it's very likely that that contractor would request other infrastructure improvements by the city, such as paved or improved surfaces, et cetera. That would not be uncommon for a proposal to expect if they're going to make a substantial investment, that the city handles some of the infrastructure. And if the committee hasn't, I might ask that you would. And perhaps it would be timely to have staff investigate other creative funding vehicles if the city's in a position where we may need to spend some money.
So I'll give you half an answer to that. We did have discussion, as was brought up by Lee and Associates, of would the city be willing to participate in funding? And, you know, of course, we had the same discussion we always have on large budget items. Where would the money come from? We really don't have the money. But we agreed, and Desiree, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't preclude participation from the city if an offer like that came back. We'd have to look at it and understand what it means in the totality of the offer. But, you know, the attempt here is not to exclude any offer that's creative in nature.
Of course.
So sort of half an answer. We didn't say yes, we didn't say no, but we didn't preclude that approach.
Randy.
Yeah.
We're well aware that the committee, I believe, is that it's going to be, taking be very different structures on offers coming back with some consideration from the city in the form of lieu of rent or cash. So, you know, we're aware of that. We want to keep it open, see what's going back.
I think the other notable thing, we extended the timeframe. You know, the original discussion was 45 days from submission and with some feedback from Marina tenants and others, these are going to be complex offerings, right? And they're not just going to be complex to those offering, it's going to be complex for us to dissect and understand what's in those offers and really try to make recommendations. New business, we had some discussion with Title Wave on activities and boundaries of their leases. And other than that, we had no miscellaneous business. All Marina tenants are current with their lease payments. And the next meeting date is actually, not what's on this, it's, yes, it is, it's July 3rd at 9:00 AM.
Any questions?
Question? With regards to Title Wave and their request this evening, is that something that anybody on council is interested in honoring?
Let's go back to...
Let me take it back to Real Property.
Well, it was indicated to do that. It's going to be July. It comes back to us at the end of July.
A question.
Most of the summer's going to be over.
Didn't we sign a lease with Morgan Creek Grill for those docks?
No. Those are, the docks, if you look at that T dock, half of it's Coastal Expeditions, the other half is unassigned, it's over right now.
Okay.
They were given to Morgan Creek Grill. That lease agreement was separate to their...
It expired at the end of May.
But it expired last month.
I thought, okay, I'm sorry. I thought we had a, like, temporary one come up.
And also, the city council, the mayor could call for a special meeting to consider this request.
Because this is really right before the peak of summer. And I understand the situation they're under. I have no problem calling a special meeting for that.
Keep in mind, we have Real Property on Wednesday, right? So it's not, this is next week.
It's a pretty straightforward request.
City council could, I mean, the property could make a recommendation.
Yeah, I don't think you have to vote on it, do you?
I'm sorry.
Real Property went forward, recommended to go forward with it, what Councilman Kinghorn's talking about, that we could give them some relief on 3rd.
Doesn't have to come to council?
Yeah, that would, I mean, it's, the Real Property Committee could make a recommendation, but it would come to full council. If the committee doesn't want to wait until the end of the month, city council can call for a special meeting.
Right. Because it's not on our budget, we can't do it, it's not on the agenda. If they have their meeting and come forward with that, we can meet.
Well, Real Property's on the agenda. We just heard the report. We discussed Title Wave. So let me turn it around this way, and this is just an effort expedite. I could make a motion that we give this council now, give the authority to Real Property coming out of their meeting, whatever their decision is, to direct staff to implement.
Unfortunately, it's not an action item on the agenda, so you don't have to...
That's what I'm trying to tell you. It's got to be on the agenda. So just let the chair do it.
It's germane to the agenda, you're choosing not to do it.
But that's, all right. Thank you, sir.
It's not on the agenda.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm just concerned if there's a way that we can do it quickly, if we decide to go forward with it, make it happen before the court.
I think we can meet again, but we need to do it proper with proper notice.
So this would require, I would advise us and city attorney to lease agreement with them, even if it's for three months, four months, and have written understanding of what we would be allowing them to use, rather than just say, yes, you can use a slip here or there. That would be the right way to do it. So we would need time to draft that agreement, present it to council, and we can certainly move really quickly, but it would require an action of council approving that agreement.
I'm going to ask a dangerous question. The docks are 100% unassigned right now. So there is no authority with anyone at this moment for those docks.
That's correct.
For our city attorney who's sitting here in front of us, we cannot take an action item like that tonight when it's not on our agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Even if we describe it as an administrative action?
24 hours to help you, you're going to take action on something.
We can move quickly.
Well, let's try to keep it simple whenever we do.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? Hearing none. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, no meeting in June for tax advisory. Board of Zoning Appeals, minutes are attached. Planning Commission, the minutes are attached. Reports from special joint committees, none. Petition's received, referred, disposed of, none. Fuel's already in possession, we've already taken care of number one, A. So B is 2911 concerning lot coverage, which we had a public hearing on before, reducing it from 40% to 35%, using pervious material for driveway sidewalks and swimming pool surrounds and, and the existing house that pulls up driveway, they can put it back in, in the existing footprint. So motion to approve as amended. Wade the reading.
Second. So moved.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
There you go.
Next item is a motion, 2912 film permit establishes a permitting process for fee for requests for commercial photographers' film and video on the beach. After review, staff may approve small, unobtrusive projects.
So moved.
Second.
Well...
Boy, they ready.
Hold on a minute. So this ordinance requires a public hearing because there's a fee associated with it. We forgot to include that in the ad for tonight's public hearing, so we will have public hearing at the next city council meeting and we'll have second reading then.
Some motion to defer into July.
Correct.
Okay.
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the second.
Thank you.
So moving on, we've deferred. Ordinance 201913 prohibit, this is a good one for Kelly, is she back there, right? Prohibit of single-use plastic bags, straws, styrofoam, food containers, cups, balloons on the beach.
So moved.
Second. Wade your reading. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Unanimous. It took us long enough. First reading. Ordinance 201914, dogs. An ordinance to require that all dogs, residents and non-residents have a state issued tag as a proof of vaccination. IOP dog permit process will remain in place and be voluntary for those citizens wishing to wretched their dogs with Owl Palms Police Department. A $5 fee would be eliminated. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Just a quick comment and clarity. Hey, yours took real long tonight. So that everyone understands, it is incumbent on residents today without the passage of this to have your dog licensed, even though as Councilmember Smith, sitting next to me, said, it's kind of voluntary. It's not voluntary. It's the law today. We're removing that law that was residence only by passage of this, so that everyone's clear and making that process voluntary.
All of those in favor?
I'll just say, it was voluntary because it was not really enforced.
That's true.
Okay, so anybody, come on, Ted.
Yeah, we're going to roll now. How's the chief feel about this? Comes down. Come on, man. Take a stand. All right.
All right, thumbs up. All those in favor, say aye. Any nays? Unanimous. Miscellaneous business. Desiree and I had a meeting with our census getting ready to take place. Desiree, you want to fill us in on that?
Just quickly, I was going to say, you know, we met with our state representative for the region for the census 2020. They're gearing up for, to start that process early next year. They recommended that the city consider establishing a complete count committee of volunteers in the community that can help spread out, you know, spread the word out and make people aware that this year, there's going to be three different ways people can fill out their census. It's going to be by telephone, online, and also a paper form. So we just want to make sure that we're going to, let you all know that we're going to be pushing a lot of information on the census. We're trying to beat our...
Beat our neighbors.
Beat our neighbors and beat our own record and get unprecedented numbers of responses. So that's going to be down the pipeline and we'll be posting information online and putting it on social media so that people know that that's coming.
Zach's going to report that, that we're going to beat Sullivan Town in Mount Pleasant. Okay. Next item on our thing is executive session in accordance with the South Carolina section to receive legal advice and consideration of settlement proposed by Jonathan Gundoffo concerning violation of a tree removal ordinance on the property located 408 Palm. But I don't think it was Palm, it was Carolina.
Carolina, that's correct. That's an error on it.
Do we have a motion, go on, executive session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all for coming.
Bye, everyone.
Can open session. No decisions were made, no actions. Yes?
Have a motion.
Yes, sir.
To reject the order.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Ayes have it. Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, everybody. This meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public are duly notified of this hearing in accordance of the Freedom of Information Act. We've got two items on our agenda, the first of which is something that we've been kind of working on since December last year. Ordinance 201910, ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the city of Owl Palms. Then I'll read the other one and then I'll let somebody else come up and start explaining some things. Ordinance, the other one is 201911, ordinance of managing Title V, planning and development. Chapter IV, zoning, Article II, district regulations of the city of Owl Palms, code of ordinances regarding limits of lot coverage and impervious surfaces. First at bat, Ms. Desiree, would you please help us?
Our city administrator. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the public hearing for the FY '20 budget, and I will go over some of the highlights. I hope this is the last time I have to repeat these, so. So the Ways and Means Committee last week unanimously recommended the proposed FY '20 budget for approval and ratification by city council tonight. The proposed budget does not include a property tax increase. The city's general fund revenues are at $11,567,620, which represents a 13% increase from FY '19 budget. The activities that are driving this increase include a 100% increase to the residential rental license rates. These rates have not been increased since they were put in place back in 2007. Also, an 18% increase in business license revenue from FY '19, which indicates significant construction activity on the island. The other activities include increases to the rates of building permits and parking rates. The general fund expenditures are at $11,328,081, which is a reduction of approximately $16,000 from FY '19 budget. Total personnel costs represent 72% of total general revenue expenditures and increased 0.03% from FY '19. So they're relatively flat. Transfers in from tourism funds to the general fund equate to approximately 3.5% of general fund revenues and not including transfers and have decreased by 31% compared to FY '19. These funds support tourism-impacted services associated with public works and also public safety. Tourism funds, which include the municipal accommodations tax, the state accommodations, and hospitality funds, are increasing slightly and represent a 3% increase from FY '19 budget. The proposed budget includes funds to support the following initiatives and projects. Repairs to the public safety building. Final design, engineering, and permitting of the Phase Three drainage project. $500,000 for small but high-impact drainage projects to address flood-prone areas. $150,000 to... flood-prone areas, $150,000 to proactively address maintenance in city buildings and assets, funds for grant writing, strategic planning, financial advisor, an online financial transparency dashboard, and a short-term rental management software. The FY '20 also, FY '20 budget also includes a replacement of a 75-foot ladder truck for the fire department and the refurbishment of the existing 95-foot ladder truck. Also included is a generator for the public works workshop. Tourism funds are supporting approximately $233,000 for landscaping and beautification of public spaces, public Wi-Fi in the recreation center, a pedestrian and bike connectivity study, a public education campaign regarding trash, keeping trash off the beach, and $84,000 for special events. The Beach Preservation Fund is supporting $25,000 for a dune vegetation planting program, which is a cost-sharing initiative between the city and the residents to encourage planting of native vegetation to strengthen our dune system. Also included in the Beach Preservation Fund is a $35,000 expense for feasibility study to evaluate alternatives available to address erosion in the breach inlet area. Also included are $115,000 for maintenance and improvements of our existing dune walkovers and ADA-accessible beach access paths. The initiatives related to the I O P Marina include a real estate consultant to guide and advise the city related to a new restaurant lease, and also the final design, engineering, and permitting for the replacement of the docks at the Alapams Marina. The staff recommends and request approval of the proposed budget tonight. That's all I have.
Do we have anybody from the public who has any questions? Looking around, I don't see many.
Debbie?
I do want to say a big thank you to all the department heads, and in particular, Debbie, who is a rock star, and the city is very well-served with her, having, having her here, and thank you for keeping up with all of us.
Well presented. Thank you very much. Ordinance 201911, Mr. Douglas.
Or should I put Rick up there, too?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance achieves three different things. The first and probably most impactful to, to construction on the island is that it will require all-new, what we've termed hard landscaping, and that would be things like walkways, driveways, patios, pool surrounds. All of those in the future would have to be of pervious materials. That's the, that's the main impact of this ordinance. There is also in here a reduction in the allowable impervious surface requirement. Currently, that requirement is 40%, and it would drop it to 35%. But in kind of looking at the examples and running the calculations, basically by requiring all of the driveways and pool surrounds to be pervious, almost every project that's been done kind of by default would meet that new 35% block coverage limit. Things to note about this change, first of all, and this is going to be, this will be an amendment from the last, the version that you all gave first reading to, so you'll need to make that during, during the motions regarding this ordinance. There was a change to address existing impervious surfacing, and the code, this, this code would allow owners to replace existing impervious surfaces in their existing footprint. So an older house has a concrete drive, it's been cracked up. This language would allow them to pull it up and replace it in the exact footprint. If they wanted to expand it, that, that new footprint that they expanded into would have to be of pervious material. The other thing to note is that the existing code has a, kind of a minimum threshold for those small lots. It allows 3,200 square feet of lot coverage, and while the percentage changed, that floor or minimum did not change. So if you have a tiny lot, you could still cover 3,200 square feet, which is the way, which is the way the ordinance currently reads. And then on the same thing, we have at the upper end, a maximum limit of 7,000 square feet, and that also does not change. So an enormous lot, currently you can cover 7,000 square feet, and under this proposed amendment, you would still be allowed to cover 7,000 square feet. And that's all I have.